Go ahead and call today's meeting of the Clay County Board of Commissioners to order. The first item on our agenda this morning is an approval of the agenda. I do have two requests for addition. One would be a request for board approval to repurchase tax forfeit property. This is from Kevin Shores, also goes by Naysay. And then the next piece would be item two, request for approval to hire solid waste truck driver with requested salary grid placement.
Move approval of the agenda with additions.
I have a motion from Commissioner Campbell to approve the agenda with additions.
Second.
A second offered from Commissioner Gross. And we will do those quickly right after the acknowledgement of donations. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. Employee recognitions today. We will, today are recognizing Annette Mahler for 20 years of service to Clay County and its citizens from the Treasurer's Office. Was Lori going to come and say anything about Annette? Lori was not able to make it today though, but Annette, we are so thankful and grateful for the work that you've done for Clay County over those 20 years. Scott Mattson. Scott, we're recognizing you today in grateful recognition for the 20 years of service to Clay County and our citizens. Thank you so much for the work that you do.
Thank you.
Holly?
Thank you. So in those 20 years that Scott's been with us, he's had a number of roles. Primarily, he's done child protection case management and currently, he does our men's choices assessments and works with people in our Caddywafer who are over 65. In addition to that, he helps people move from nursing homes back into the community, into their own home with supports. So, thank you Scott for all your work. I know I can always count on Scott to go above and beyond and get his work done. So, thank you for 20 years.
And then Pamela Anderson. Peanut gallery back there? Pam, we're recognizing you today for the 30 years of service that you've given Clay County. We're so grateful for that time and thank you so much for all that you've done. And Rory is going to say?
So not only has Pam spent 30 years here with Clay County, she's also spent another 12 years previously in IT. So she's had a long, long run in IT and we hope to have her for a few more years. She's been crucial over the years as far as keeping everybody's machines up and going and we appreciate everything you do and we wish you good luck and congratulations.
The next item on our agenda this morning is our citizens to be heard portion. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the board on anything that is not advertised on the agenda? Any citizens that are wishing to address the board? Steve, have you had any correspondence for this piece?
I have not, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The approval of the payment of bills and vouchers. Motion offered from Commissioner Gross to pay the bills and vouchers.
Second.
A second from Commissioner Campbell. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Bills are paid. The approval of the minutes that are in our packet from September 20th.
Move for approval.
Commissioner Ebinger moves to approve the minutes as presented. Second. Second from Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Today, we'd like to recognize two donations. One from the Saban Lions Club, gift of $100, a memorial given in honor of Sheriff Bill Burquist to be used for the Dare account. And the second from the Comstock Community Center in the amount of $100 to donate to the work detail supplies. Thank you so much for those donations. Certainly, those two entities do great work in the communities in which they are present I'd like to take the first agenda addition, please. We have Kurt Cannon here. Our, the request for board approval to repurchase tax forfeit property in Moorhead. Kurt, thank you for your work on this. This is a follow-up from a citizen concern and certainly appreciate the work that your department has done to help this veteran work through this item.
Madam Chair, Board, Kevin R. Short, he apologized for not being here. I was there this morning to transport him here, but he had a wheelchair. Well, the wheelchair went moved, so. He provided a letter, but with his approval, he asked me to represent him to repurchase his home at 902 16th Street South in Moorhead. He did provide a narrative. Sorry for the lateness to insert it in your packet.
Thank you Kurt. So, this is also something that we've worked through with our Auditor Treasurer. She's aware of this. I believe Steve has worked with our legal counsel to make sure that we're following all the parameters. This certainly appears to fall within the rules of what we've done in the past for situations similar. So what you're asking is a motion from this board to acknowledge his request, correct?
To repurchase.
I would move that we accept this request for the repurchase of his home from the state.
Second.
Motion offered from Commissioner Kaylee, a second from Commissioner Ebinger to approve the request for repurchase. Any other discussion? Thanks again for going over there this morning to help.
No problem.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. Thanks Kurt.
Thank you.
And you'll communicate with Mr. Shores.
Yes.
I'd like to take the second agenda addition quickly, please. Request for approval to hire solid waste truck driver with a request for salary grid placement. We have our solid waste manager Cory Bing with us today. Good morning Cory.
Good morning. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And then I'm going to ask HR Director Darren Brooke to come up as well, since this was part of a pick, long-term pick discussion. Okay Cory, sorry.
Thank you for getting us on the agenda so rapidly. This kind of came about in short notice, but as you know, we've been looking to hire a truck driver since I believe last May and we've had very few applicants based on salary. I do have a gentleman now that's willing to come. He's got everything we need as far as he can run all the equipment out there. He does not have his CDL yet, but he's willing to get that. We would like to hire him at grade 11, step 5, which is $23.57 an hour. And we would like to also request that we pay for his CDL class. The best class I can find at this point is about $6,000. He could do it in a week's time or less. It would pay for itself in essentially a week because when we bring in people to haul the leachate landfill, it's costing us $350 a load. They're hauling 20 to 25 loads a week, so that's upward of $7,000 a week. So, to me, it just makes cost sense to hire this gentleman, even though it's a little bit higher on the grid than we originally wanted, but.
Commissioner Campbell has a comment.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, we have had an opportunity to talk with Cory about this and it's no big secret that the availability of CDL drivers is very rare. Everybody's looking for them. And this is another one of those areas where our grid is not following the market at all, unfortunately. So, I certainly, and I think, you know, we certainly support, I certainly support the move there. The, the part about the CDL license, I think it's going to have to have some discussion about it. And again, I think that's another area where we're going to, we're going to need to do I think for us to be able to say, well, we're going to go ahead and, and pay for this, I think there has to be something attached to that. You know, and I, that's, I think that's the conversation we're going to have to have. I don't think the county is going to be in a position to be able to pay for some of these requirements without some stipulation in there that says, we need to have you stay here for a certain length of time if we're going to be doing that. You know, so I don't know if, you know, maybe that's, this is something more directed to Darren. I don't know at what point in time we could have pick, talk about this particular portion of this and come forward with a, with a plan that, that makes sense. And I think I saw an email from you or something that we don't want to do any knee-jerk reaction here, but, but this, this is critical and, and we finally have somebody, so I, you know, I, I don't know Cory, maybe a question for you, if you've had a conversation with the applicant, is, is the, the piece regarding the CDL, is that something that we can follow up with that person on?
Yes, he will, and, and I agree, he needs to sign something that says he will be here for a certain amount of time. He's agreed to that. He's, he's more than willing to come at this point and, and do whatever it takes, so. And honestly, he's the exact type of hire I was talking about when I wanted to cross train. This gentleman, he's been in the garbage business for six, seven years already, can run every piece of equipment we have. He has heavy equipment, you know, experience, so he could fit in basically anywhere we need him immediately, except the CDL portion. And he is willing to sign something for that, so.
If I can, Madam Chair, maybe if, if Darren can address the piece about moving forward, how we, how we would deal with this type of a...
Right. Just a, a little bit of background, we posted this position, like I think Cory said, back in May and June of last year. We've had seven applicants, most of them weren't qualified. We also had three interviews for this position. We offered three people the position and all of them rejected it because of pay. This person did come back again, once we posted it on step one through five and said that he would be interested and, but he does not have the CDL. So that was the big sticking point. We did have a long conversation in the pick about CD, you know, paying for CDLs and stuff like that. There's a lot of details that we have to still work out, but I think that, like you said, the way that truck drivers, I mean, there are just not a ton of them out there that are going to be qualified. You know, the diversion is sucking up a lot of them. The farmers at this time of year are sucking up a lot of them. And so, to get somebody that is already in the solid waste business, I think he works for, he's local right now, so he's not coming from anywhere else. And I think the biggest aspect is to, if we are going to pay for the CDL, and I think the $6,000 was the max wage that you found, correct?
Yes, the $6,000 was the, was the most costly one, of course, but it was also the most rapid. The guy had availability. The other ones were, NDSCS has a class, but that doesn't start till the end of October. And the 49ers have a class, but that did not offer all the endorsements. That was a little cheaper, but it wouldn't have everything he needed, so he'd have to take some additional schooling, so. The one I presented at the $6,000 mark, they will come in, he has to do his online training ahead of time, which he could do now. Then he would take less than a week and he would be ready to test, so. Then it would just be the availability of testing site.
So I think within his, his offer letter, that we would have to determine what is the appropriate timeframe that he would have to say? Is it, is it one year, is it two years? You know, that's probably the conversation that we have to have, not necessarily that, are we going to pay for it? But, you know, if we do pay for it and that's $6,000 max that's going to come out of the county budget, you know, how long are we going to determine he has to stay here to do that? And then, you know, if for some reason he does leave a month later, what are the payback implications that he might incur? And we would put that in, in an offer letter as all part of that. So I think that's what we have to do, is maybe get approval today if the board is okay with hiring at grade 11, step 5, and then work out the details either in the pick, or probably in the pick, of how we want to address the CDL piece of paying.
And I, you know, this is definitely, not this hire per se, but the parameters regarding CDL and after a different administration changed the rules and the requirements and the trainings, we knew we would have to have a discussion about what the board wants to do regarding that. We know we're in a workforce shortage as it is. This board is going to have to figure out how we want to go forward with that. You know, I certainly feel like in a, in a time when you're seeing schools getting ready to cancel games because they don't have drivers for coach buses and other businesses starting to really cut back services because they don't have drivers, you know, it might seem knee-jerk, but it, it's also damage control because Cory gave a report to the Solid Waste Committee on Thursday about the solid waste crew. And I will tell you that our director is running loads at 4:00 AM to help with the driver shortage and then come back and do things. So I, one, that's not feasible to burn the candle at both ends that, that way, but, you know, this, this is going to be a policy change. And so if the board approves Darren, like you're recommending the, the grid placement, I would and could be available to have a pick committee meeting in the next week to figure out what that looks like. And certainly, I, you know, I, I think there needs to be some extra language added to how you recoup that cost, but I also feel like this is, this is how business is going to have to be done going forward. Commissioner Gross and then...
What happens if someone doesn't pass the CDL? I mean, we pay for the class and he doesn't pass it.
I don't know. The CDL, you have to help me on that one.
Obviously, they could retake the test, so I, I don't have any doubt in my mind that this gentleman could pass the CDL test, but that could also be something we should work in there just in case.
Which might be similar to how we've had other requirements if someone will be hired and within six months of hire needs to have some certification. That's not just something we require for this department, but the wording could be similar.
I would like it to happen faster than six months, though, like in the next 45 days or so.
Yeah.
Or tomorrow.
Or else, and then I think someone else, or Commissioner Campbell, sorry.
So, I agree, and I, I think we should try to schedule this pick committee as soon as we can. All indications are the demand for CDL drivers is going to get way worse than it is right now, when you listen to everything that's happening throughout the country. So to, to give some support in order to get an upper hand on getting what we need, we don't want to have our garbage not being picked up. That wouldn't be a good thing.
I think, and this is, this is kind of a quick fix, but we also, once a transfer station opens up, you're going to need how many more drivers?
At this point, we'll be looking at two more, and then we also have one that's out now on FMLA, so depending on his status, could be up to three total, so.
Did anyone else have a comment that I missed? Okay, it's been presented well. What are the board's desires?
I would move the request to offer this position for this particular individual at grade 11. What'd you say it was?
Step 5.
Step 5, yeah. Grade 11, step 5.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the hire and grid placement.
Second.
From Commissioner Campbell, a second from Commissioner Ebinger. I think the further discussion will then be that we're wanting a pick committee soon to decide the CDL component, Commissioner?
Yeah, and I, I agree with that, and, and part of that would be to have that discussion about, you know, the CDL license issues, but also the grid itself. You know, because otherwise, we're going to be revisiting this every single time that we have a potential candidate, so we need to fix it. And, and so that, that should be part of what this pick should be looking at.
Yep, we're already looking at that. We've had, we just finished up our last, our last second negotiation with all of our groups, and that has come up with, as a topic for many of them, so.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Request is granted, thank you.
Thank you.
And then, why don't you send out a feeler for meeting dates? Thank you. Okay, thanks for your patience. Number two, we are, the update on the United Way campaign. We have Rita and Kirsten, LaRae, and then United Way reps Valerie and Megan. Grab some extra chairs if you need. And when you speak, make sure the microphones are green. Good morning, everyone.
Morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Thank you for having us this morning. We'll try to keep it quick to save your time. So, this year's committee is comprised of LaRae Golden from Social Services and Kirsten Wagnis from Social Services, James O'Donnell, who couldn't be with us this morning. Also this morning, we have with us Valerie Nice. She's the Resource Development Manager from United Way. And we have Megan Kikner from, she's a store director of South Fargo Cashwise, and she's a campaign cabinet coordinator, volunteer, excuse me, for United Way. So that's our committee this year. What we'd like to do is go over what we did last year, because we never had a follow-up on that. When we look at the total amount that we brought in for last year's campaign with the special events and the employee contributions, it was a total of $11,852.40. Up considerably from the year before, but not our highest year we've ever had. I think, I'm pleased with the results. We are looking at some numbers and we've realized, Darren had pointed out to me, the percentage of contributions, the previous years were based on employee count of 371 to 401. Our employee count has always been over 600. So that throws our statistics off considerably for the percentages. So I'm going to have Valerie talk a little bit about that and explain how that impacts the total picture.
Yeah, absolutely. Yep. Okay. All right. Absolutely. So, as Rita said, the, the employee count is just a little bit different in the 2020, 2019, and 2018 columns. That's just a mistake on our systems end of not having the accurate employee count in our system. But really, what we can look at is the number of donors, which is the, right above the percent participation. And so in 2021, 68 employees decided to give. In 2020, 42. 2019, 98. In 2018, 83. So you can kind of see the participation go up and down throughout those years. So, that's always what I look at, is the, the number of people that give, not necessarily the participation, but looking at the current number of, the 615 that we have listed, about 11% last year gave to United Way. So we're super grateful for the support.
Also, last year was the first year we've done a totally online pledge. So each employee received an online pledge form directly from United Way, and I want to thank Darren for his help on that. It cut down the paperwork considerably on my end, but also, we knew we were reaching every employee. So, passing out paper forms, I think that's where we got that three to four-year count before, whereas now we had an email for every employee in the county, and so we knew they got their pledge form, whether they saw it or not, I don't know. Because I know we have a lot of people that are out in, in a different work environment than in office in front of a computer. So, this year, we're going to have the online pledge, but we're also going to make paper forms available for each department, for those people that aren't in front of a computer for their workday. I don't know if it's going to make a difference, but we're going to try it, so. So this year, we have a timeline, kind of, on October 6th, the employees will all be notified that they'll be receiving an email from United Way and also be given a big warning that, don't report it to IT as fishing. That happened a lot last year. And it's still happened, but, so we'll try to keep extra load off the IT department. October 10th, the employees will receive their email pledge forms, and on October 28th, we will close the campaign. So within that timeframe, at the Government Center, we've got a lot of activities lined up. We're going to have a bake sale, book and media sale, we're having a chili feed, we're having guessing jars, and we've had a large pumpkin donated, and then we're going to have people pay a dollar to guess the weight of the pumpkin, and then they win the pumpkin. So, I'm going to let Kirsten and LaRae fill us in on other department activities.
Good morning. I'm going to take James's spot today since he couldn't join us. So James from West Central, they are planning a baked potato feed, I believe. The date is not yet set, but as soon as he has all of the details, we will make sure that that information gets emailed out. So, be looking for that, and I believe that's going to be held at the Family Service Center. So, watch your emails for that.
He wanted it later in the month, too, so.
And then through Social Services, we are going to kind of team up with the Government Center on the same day of their bake sale. From sounds of it, bake sale last year was pretty profitable just at the Government Center, so we thought we'd duplicate that over at Social Services. And we'll be holding a bake sale down in the lobby at the Family Service Center on October 13th, just asking contributions from our Social Services Department, and then hopefully get a lot of buyers just coming in and out of the Family Service Center that day. So, we'll see how we do compared to the Government Center, and I'm sure we'll beat them.
You should, because you have way more employees and more traffic. Unless we put a sign out front on 12th Avenue, "Bake Sale."
Well, wow, over $11,000. That is quite a number, and, you know, we have employees that are so gracious with their time and have such a heart for helping others really live the motto of United Way, I think, but $11,852 really goes above and beyond to do great work. Do you have any reports in some of, some of the ways that this, the money can go to benefit our community?
He's anxious to talk about that.
Yeah, I was like, I think that's me. Absolutely, yeah. So, we are, as I said, super grateful for the support from Clay County employees. And this year, our campaign is focusing on preparing kids to succeed, so that is one of the areas that United Way focuses on. And so this year specifically, we are expanding a partnership with the schools in Cass and Clay Counties to get a, kind of like a case manager, support person, coordinator, to coordinate services for students living in poverty in our, in our communities. And so, that has been, we have a video that I think will be sent out at some point, but that's kind of what we're highlighting this year. And, you know, we have our areas of reducing hunger and homelessness, preparing kids to... to succeed, and helping people be independent. And so, all of those dollars went towards furthering those areas and the partnerships that we have within those specific bold goals, we call them.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for that. Any questions from the board? Commissioner Kaylee?
Are Commissioners allowed to donate to this bake sale, baked goods?
To donate to the bake sale?
Mm-hmm.
If you bring it to the Government Center?
Yeah.
No, of course, you're allowed to donate.
Happen to know a particular Commissioner that likes to bake.
Yeah, Frank loves baking.
Yep.
Sorry. No, you can bring it to either location, and you're welcome to shop at either location as well.
Fabulous, thank you.
And right through that
Commissioner.
Challenge out there, but we're all one, we're all one team, so.
Well, Rita and Kirsten, and all of you, and James, and everybody at the county level and Social Services, thank you for, for the, not only for encouraging employees to financially contribute, but to even go that extra mile to be baking potatoes and selling them to allow additional revenues that come into there. And I, I really think that, that the number of the dollar amount is higher than what is reported here, and I'm going to give you an example. I personally contribute through another agency, but through that other agency, it allows me to still choose which of those entities I wanted to go to, and United Way being one. So, so there are, there are still other, other resources, I think, that are coming through county people that, that this doesn't specify. And then, going to those numbers, I, I really think that, that maybe in those other years, maybe they were referring to mostly full-time people as opposed to part-time and roster people. That might be the difference why you had 615 versus the, you know, high 300s or 400, you know. So, that could be, and that, and that skews just the statistics, but, but it's, I agree with Commissioner Mojo, too, that it's a great number to be collecting on behalf of United Way from our county employees.
I don't think anyone talked about what the life pledge number is. Can you report that? Because it's huge.
I can speak to that.
Yeah, Valerie's better at the spreadsheet than I am.
Well, so that rolls up all of the years of donations that are in our system. I believe we, maybe around 2000, we switched to a different system. So, that rolls up all of the gifts each year from 2000 until this year. So, looking at employee giving, almost $300,000. Workplace special events, $10,000. And so, all in all, over $300,000 that employees have donated throughout the years, so that's amazing.
Good, thank you for that. Commissioner Gross?
You go to different departments and talk to them about the United Way.
We have talked about that. And any department that is able to have an employee gathering, myself, or Valerie, or Megan are all available to come speak. The problem is, a lot of our departments don't have that ability to have all their people together at one time. So, we would, we have resources to do that if we could.
I think some of the departments have safety meetings or whatever, that you could get yourself on, on the minutes or whatever, you know, talk to them. I think that would help, too.
No, we're available. We'd be happy to do that, maybe bring some treats, have a quick meeting. We're, we're always looking for ways to pump up the energy, to have people more interactive with the campaign, and to get the word out for United Way. And that's our, that's part of our reason for being here today, is to update the board from last year, as well as to show the employees and especially the supervisors of each department that the board is on, online with this, that they are interested in the campaign, and that they are supporting it as well as the administration. And I, that's part of our reason for being here today, is to have that visual and put it out there. So, that's what we're asking for you today, is for your support and your blessings.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, just one other thing. So, so the, the process for an employee to be willing to contribute to United Way, does that go through the open enrollment process, or how, when, when does that happen? Can somebody join mid-year with the county? How does all of that work?
So, the campaign's only one time a year where everybody is given a pledge form. And a lot, I would say, probably more than 90% of our donations from the employees come through payroll deduction. So, in order to make that happen, it has to kind of be a one-time thing, so.
Is that then through the open enrollment period? Is that when that's submitted, or how?
No, that's going to be the email that's come, that's coming out October 10th, directly from United Way with the online pledge form.
Commissioner Ebbinger?
Yeah, just something I'd like the employees to be aware of. United Way has been part of my entire working career back from the late 70s. And one of the reasons that it was significant to me, well, there were two reasons. Number one, I worked in a field where I saw the problems, and that was law enforcement. We have Social Services, we have people in juvenile, we have people in corrections. And everybody here, the majority of our employees are working directly with the issues and the, the problems that United Way addresses. And the other thing is, when we contribute to United Way, that money stays local. And it's great to contribute to some of the things that don't affect our community the way they do in others, but this is something that, as an employee, and as, as someone who's aware of the issues within our own community, we can make a direct contribution to the, to address those issues. And I always kind of found that significant, and I'd hope our employees remember that when they get their card, or when they get their email, and they respond.
In a perfect world, the work that United Way is doing would curtail a lot of the problems that our law enforcement, and our Social Services, and all those departments are having to work with as those young people get older, you know? If, if everything worked perfectly, and those dollars did exactly what we wanted it to do, we wouldn't have the poverty, we wouldn't have the crime, we wouldn't have the dysfunctional families, because that's our goal, is to curtail all that, so.
All right. Thank you very much for your work and your report, and we'll look forward to the email that will not be a phishing attempt.
Thank you.
Yes. The next item is a request from the correctional facility. We have our Administrator Carrie and Assistant Administrator Katie Johnson. Two items this morning would be the first approval to sign the medical contract for the correctional facility. Good morning.
Morning.
Morning, Commissioners. Okay, so, first thing I want to do, good morning, if I didn't say that.
You did, you're good.
Okay.
Double good mornings.
Yeah, double good mornings.
Thank you.
I wanted to first update you with ACH, which is our, our medical contract. They came in, would have been midnight on August 1st. Pretty smooth transition for them coming in. A lot better than I think some of the other counties had. We didn't have any issues at all, so that was, that was a positive thing. Couple more updates for you. We have two full-time nurses now that are hired, a part-time nurse, and our practitioners all, they're all hired. So, the only thing we're missing right now is just one, either part-time or full-time nurse, so.
All right.
Yeah. One of the reasons why we're here, ACH kind of granted me some time to go through what we would actually need within the original RFP that they sent out. They had stated in that original RFP, a psychiatric nurse practitioner. We have found that, that's more of a luxury, something that we don't actually need to have, because the process that we run with right now is where we have our mental health professionals. They are, they have the ability to diagnose and then offer what medications and so forth they think an individual should be on. And what they do then is directly communicate with our practitioner, and our practitioner then gets them set up for their meds. So, by eliminating that, that's kind of helped reduce the cost. But in doing so, we kind of found that we would, are hoping to get an electronic medical charting system. So, when we first moved in, we had a few sprinklers burst on us, and a couple, more than a couple files had got destroyed in that situation. So, it's just another reason to have things on a hard drive somewhere, and kind of update our, our technology a bit. It also helps eliminate documentation errors through handwriting situations. We know how doctors' handwritings are and so forth, so. That is something that we are looking to possibly do with your guys' permission, but with eliminating the nurse practitioner, in the original RFP, it was $753,871. By eliminating that nurse practitioner and bringing in the electronic charting system, that would bring us down to $718,313.
All right. Good recap on that. Questions from the board? If not, you, the first item would be requesting to sign the medical contract for that. This has had substantial legal review. I know Mr. Lees is just walking back in, but this has been reviewed by legal.
Yep.
Questions? Comments?
Is this a yearly contract?
This is a three-year contract.
Yes, Commissioner Ebbinger?
Are we ready to implement this right away, or will there be a transition?
To the, the medical?
Yeah.
The electronic? We would try and do that right away.
So, before you, there is a request for approval to sign the medical contract with ACH for the correctional facility.
Move for approval.
Motion to approve from Commissioner Ebbinger.
Second.
A second from Commissioner Kaylee. Commissioner Campbell, did you have comments?
Just a question on the three-year contract. Is there, is there built-in increases?
Uh, yes, there are. I believe it's like a
Percent?
Percentage, two, two to three percentage based on the market.
Okay. Any other questions on that? Comments? We do have a motion and a second on the table. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carrie is, thank you. The next component of the day would be the approval to fill the vacancies for three correctional officers.
Before you guys get alarmed, that three was from a couple months ago, so it was all added into our figures, so. I wanted to wait until we got down to a good number where I came back and bothered you guys, so. And actually, where we're at, I'd like to give you an update on that as well. So, by December, we will have, by the end of this month, we're going to have three starting, and another one starting in December when he gets back from deployment. That number should bring us down to three. That is best-case scenario, nobody goes anywhere, everybody gets trained in properly. I don't foresee any issues with any training, so could be down to three by December.
Three needed.
Yep, three total. Three, yes. Three open spots.
Okay, questions?
And when we, Madam Chair, when we first started this deal, there wasn't that like a, didn't work?
Uh, we were up to 14 at one point, yep.
Yes, Commissioner Ebbinger?
I just want to make a comment. We got a, the sheriff forwarded a recognition of your employees intervening and using mental health resources to avert a suicide. Just one example, I am very impressed, and having had some years in the, in, in, in the business, and even six of the longest months of my career was when I made sergeant, and they put me in the jail, because I was a rookie supervisor. Phenomenal people that you've got working for you, and they're well-led, and I'm really grateful for that. And I think we need to acknowledge that as we bring new people on. You're, you're bringing them in right, and you're leading them right, and I think we're, as a Commission, we're grateful for that.
Thank you, appreciate it. They are wonderful people over there, they really are.
Commissioner Ebbinger stole a little bit of my thunder, which in turn is your thunder, but I was going to comment on that component as well. I think I'll take it a, a step further in what this person actually said.
Yeah.
That he received the most help and caring that he had ever received in his life. And so, for an individual to say that about a time where they're incarcerated is saying something. So, thank you for giving people dignity and the treatment that they need sometimes.
Absolutely. That is our, that is our goal.
Any other comments? All right, so we do have a motion and a second, right? Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carrie, thank you. Good work.
Thank you, guys.
Katie, did you want to say anything?
No. Thank you very much. I tried.
Okay, the next item will be a request to appoint a new chief deputy sheriff with salary grid placement. Our Sheriff Emptine is here. And then, before we go into committee reports, I did get a message from our Auditor Treasurer that she would like us to revisit the repurchase to pass a resolution for that approval, so we'll, we'll handle your item first, though. Good morning, Sheriff.
All right. Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners, thanks for having us this morning. I am in front of you today to request the appointment of a new chief deputy. Chief Deputy Lansum has indicated that he intends on retiring on March 31st of 2023. With his absence, it's a lot of knowledge that's going to be leaving our department, and it would be very helpful and beneficial to be able to place a chief deputy in that position prior to his departure, so that person can work with Steve for a few months to learn the job. So, when Steve is off in retirement on April 1st, it's a smooth transition. And the other reason I would like to do this appointment a little bit earlier is because on February 5th, there is a course through the Minnesota Sheriff's Association that is only offered once every four years, and it's called the New Chief Deputy Course. And at that course, the, the, the new chief deputy would learn everything about sheriff's offices. They gain a lot of, a, a lot of contacts and partnerships with people at the state and federal level. So, it's a, it's a very good course, and you learn a lot, and they jam-pack a lot of information in a week's time. You're going from about eight in the morning to sometimes six, seven o'clock at night with these courses, so it's, it's a very good course. And the other thing I'm asking and requesting is to have that new chief deputy be placed on the same exact grid and grade where Steve is currently at, which is grade 26, Step 9. And as you can see from the information that I did provide, that is all in our 2023 budget. I'm not here to request any additional funds to have that person work with Steve for two months. We do have that covered in our budget as well. There may or may not be a backfill with this, so with that, I would also add, add, add a potential backfill with this request, and we did discuss this at pick committee last week as well.
Thank you very much. And just, you had commented on, this had gone through a pick committee, so we had had discussions in that. Sheriff, or, looking at the sheriff finishing my comment, Commissioner Ebbinger?
Thank you. I used to have a saying that you don't buy parachutes, life preservers, or police chiefs on sale. And in this case, I think we'll add chief deputies. You get what you pay for. I think having him, him or her there with Steve for two months, I had an opportunity when I came tomorrow, I had to work with Grant I had an opportunity when I came tomorrow, I had to work with Grant Whelan for two weeks. And they brought me down two months before I started to go to the Chief Association Executive Training Institute to give me some idea what I was getting into. These are all extremely prudent decisions in, in this request. So I, I think it's, it's a good direction.
And just to, also for the public to know, the sheriff has the ability to appoint whoever they'd like to that chief deputy position. It's the, the component in terms of the grid that you're coming to ask for approval on that. Certainly, we appreciate, this whole board appreciates the fact that you come and work with us so closely with your budget and, and the approval that required, is required from the board. But thanks, thanks for doing that. Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, thank you. The, over the past years, the Clay County Sheriff has, has had the good fortune of, of having good chief deputies. And, and I have to say that not all the sheriffs were the best in the world at, at, at doing a budget on their own. And I think a lot of those sheriffs depended on their chief deputies to do that. And I'm assuming and I'm looking at somebody who's probably familiar with that and understands what I'm talking about there?
Yep, absolutely.
So, so that being said, I, I think the, you know, when you, when you just look at the timeframe that's involved when Steve's going to be gone, you know, it's only two months after that, that, that this really budgeting process starts in full earnest. And I, I think we need to allow this new appointee of yours, whoever it is, that time to work alongside Steve for that purpose only. I mean, even that in itself is a, is a critical component to be able to have access to the knowledge that Steve, and of course, I know that Steve would volunteer to come in weekly to help him even once he's retired, but
I'm sure daily.
For free.
For free. No, but I, I think, I think, and, and we did discuss this at PIC and it's been supported, these requests are supported by PIC as well.
Commissioner Ebinger?
I'd just like to make the motion that we approve this request and that the new chief deputy be brought in at grade 26, Step 9, that we have them respond two months prior to Chief Deputy Lansum's retirement and that it be open to possible backfill.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Ebinger, for the motion. A second from Commissioner Campbell. Further discussion, Commissioner Kaylee, and then Commissioner Gross. Other than the importance of this position, can you share some of the rationale for starting at grade 26, Step 9?
It is definitely a very important position and it, I find it that we need to have that person start there because again, you don't want to, as Commissioner Ebinger said, you don't want to buy this person on the cheap and you want to have somebody that's very capable of being in that position. And right now, sometimes it's very tough to find employees alone. And then when you're talking about appointments, that's, that is something that, that people are going to be asking you is what's, what's going to be the step? What's going to be my wage? I've already talked to somebody. He's asked me what the wage is and he said that's a pay cut.
So with that, then for the public listening, nobody outside of this room really knows what grade 26, Step 9 is. So can you share what, what that wage would be, what that means in real numbers?
Roughly, what are you at currently right now? It's 15?
I think the budget, what's budgeted for the new deputy if approved, is that the 102,307?
That would be for the, a new deputy for the new chief deputy. Steve's currently at 57,45 an hour.
Thank you.
You would have to add the cola.
You'd have to add a 4% cola with that as well.
And I think probably to further Commissioner Kaylee's question, if the sheriff is unavailable, who, who is that first point of contact to the sheriff?
The chief deputy. In my absence, it is the chief deputy.
Other questions? Commissioner Gross?
The only thing that scares me about this thing is that I see Steve retiring. Him and my son were classmates, so that sort of scares me. I'm old. I guess we get old every year, I guess. So that's, thanks for your work, Steve.
Yes, Commissioner Ebinger?
Yeah, Steve, I want to throw a little addition on that too. You stepped up in the final phases of building that LEC and correctional facility. Were a champ in that and that was a difficult time. You served as an interim. This is just a, you know, we're losing a great employee here. Sheriff's losing a great backup and we want to make sure whoever he, he gets is at least going to be able to, if they can't fill your shoes, they're going to be at least able to unlase them and wait for their feet to grow. Well, you've done a great job. And the, all the good stuff you hear about retirement? They're underrating it. You're going to love it.
Every one of you guys has a big smile on their face every time.
Anything else?
I just want to say, we don't want to encourage our employees to retire. We need to retain them.
Yeah. Yeah, it's hell out there. It's tough.
Anything else? All right. We do have a motion and a second on the table. All those in favor of the motion reluctantly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried.
Thank you. I'd also like to just add quick, the sheriff's office along with our local law enforcement agencies are in the process of a sock drive. And I know our county administrator is going to hand that around, but we are taking new socks at the sheriff's office to donate to the Golden, I forget, what, what does that say, Commissioner Campbell? The Golden Sock Drive or?
Golden Drive, yeah. Sock Drive.
The Golden Sock Drive and it benefits all the schools in the metro area. So when they're all collected, then the, the organizer of the event will, will distribute it those out to all the, all the schools in the metro. So if you would like to donate socks to the sheriff's office, we have a nice big box in the LEC lobby. Make sure you put it in the box. That's underneath the sheriff's badge because the Moorehead Police Department is doing the same thing. So, there, there you go.
Specific sizes?
Uh, all sizes. All sizes are, are welcome. We do have it on our sheriff's office Facebook page as well.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. If I might go back to the first agenda addition, the request for repurchase on that tax parcel, I did receive a note from Lori Johnson requesting that we pass a resolution for that one, a resolution 2022-29. And since this is the first time anyone would see that, I should probably read it so you all know what we're talking about. Be it resolved by the Clay, or the Board of Commissioners of Clay County, Minnesota on this fourth day of October 2022. There's a typo on that one that you gave me, Colleen. Pursuant to provisions of Chapter 282 of Minnesota statutes, the county auditor of Clay County is hereby directed to sell parcels of land that have been forfeited to the state of Minnesota for delinquent taxes and certified by the county auditor and recorded in the office of the county recorder, which lands have been classified and appraised as provided by law. Be it further resolved that the terms of the sale shall be cash only on all parcels. Pursuant to Minnesota statute 282-241, the previous owner may not purchase a parcel of land less than the delinquent amount assessments, penalties, interest, and costs against it. In addition to the total sale price, there shall also be an amount added equal to 3% of such total sales price. Said 3% is to be certified to the tax assurance account as required under Minnesota statute 284 dot 28 subdivision 6. A $25 state deed fee and the $46 recording fee must also be collected for each parcel sold. Each parcel is subject to a state deed tax of $1.65 per $500 of sale price. There will also be an additional $50 well certificate for any property that contains a well. Purchases of property at this sale will receive a state deed. Clay County does not guarantee clear title on purchases of tax forfeit land. It is the responsibility of the purchaser to take whatever action necessary to assure a clear title. Steve, can you recap this? Do you have this available? And if this coincides with everything that we've done this morning on the prices?
Yes, that would coincide with the information the auditor provided both on the resolution and for, for the handout today.
So everything that I just read is in this memo that was in the, the agenda addition that the county board got this morning?
Yeah.
And this was all communicated to the individual?
That's correct.
Okay. So nothing is changing based on the grounds that we approved prior, except the fact that we need to pass resolution 2022-29?
That's correct.
And is there a problem if that was not advertised in the agenda addition?
I don't believe so, no. Because it's part of the, it's part of the requirement from the Department of Revenue that a resolution is signed. The handout that, that I provided states that as part of the purchase that, that the resolution is required.
I, so would it be off-base to ask the board for an amendment to the approved agenda to include resolution 2022-29 since we're acting?
Yes, Madam Chair, we would want the resolution to be reflected in that.
Okay.
I would still move.
So there is a motion from Commissioner Campbell
Second.
to amend the agenda to include a resolution 2022-29 with the prior addition. A second from Commissioner Ebinger. Any further comments on the agenda amendment? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That request is granted. Now, the resolution 2022-29 that I read earlier, board discussion?
Madam Chair, I, I have a question. So in, in the resolution that Commissioner Mojo read, it gets into the details of the, of the different costs and fees and everything that need to be paid. We, what we saw within our packet was a more of a summary, I think, of all of those things. And I think in listening to Mr. Shores when he was here, you know, I, and I think Kurt filed up that all of those things I think are going to be reimbursed through the veterans' organizations?
Yeah, through state housing.
State housing, through state housing, yeah. Okay. Okay. So the only question that I would have that could potentially have this come back to us, are there any of those broken down fees that have been talked about that state housing is not aware of or, or is not reimbursing that will bring Mr. Shores back here?
No. My understanding and talking with Lori Johnson, she's been in constant contact with the state in regards to what the actual payoff amount was and so
Okay.
it should not be an issue.
Okay. I just, I'm, I want to, I'm, hopefully we're putting this to bed today and, and I didn't want to have to see it come back again.
And just to clarify, I've heard the cash is available, not cap, but the money is available, but in this it says the terms of the sale shall be cash only.
Yeah, yeah. So the, the, the trigger for, for the state to release the funds through an ACH payment to the state, other state entity would come with the approval of this board and meeting minutes, recognizing that.
Okay. Approved many, meeting minutes or meeting minutes from today? Will that suffice until they're approved on next Tuesday?
I would, I would guess that it would, it would be sufficient, but that we'll send them both.
I would move resolution 2022-29.
Second.
There's a motion offered from Commissioner Kaylee to approve resolution 2022-29. A second from Commissioner Campbell. Thank you for catching the resolution component. Any further discussion? One, yes, Commissioner?
I just want to thank the auditor's office for all of their work on this and watching our meeting to make sure that we dotted all i's and crossed all the t's on this one. Thank you for your diligence.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Carried. The next item on the agenda is committee reports and because of the time, we're a little bit over, let's make sure that we're sticking to committee reports and, and relevant activities to that. Commissioner Campbell, would you like to report first?
I certainly can. So we did have a PIC meeting after the board last week on the 27th. And that meeting was, the only thing on there was the issue is related to the chief deputy and those issues that were presented today for board approval. At 1:00 that afternoon, we also had an audit meeting with the state auditor's office that went over the findings of last year's state audit. And, and again, I think the board will, will be getting a full presentation from the state auditor's office. I don't know, Steve, exactly when that's going to happen, but that, that will be set up. But I do want to give a big thank you to Lori Johnson and, and that, and the auditor's office for once again getting a very clean audit. As in any audit, you know, we, we, once in a while talk about our past experiences and, and typically in most audits, an auditor isn't going to stop until they find something wrong. But I, I think, I think they've done a remarkable job, the county auditor staff and, and again, it was another good report, which you will hear. On Wednesday, we had the Prairie Lake Solid Waste meeting in Perim. And that, everything is going well. There was, the one big issue that was talked about is there, if you recall, I reported there was a fire there a couple of months ago. And in that process, there was a big wooden door that needed to be cut to help put out the fire. When I took out a big wooden door to replace it was $40,000. And they've, they brought forward a proposal to put that in concrete because it's a door that doesn't need to be open and closed. It acts as a barrier for when they push waste. And so now they're looking at doing a new push wall with, with concrete. That number is $50,000 to do that, but it's something that needs to be done. And because of the, where we are financially, we're really, we're really doing well this year. Our, our revenues from selling steam are way up. So we believe that we're going to be able to absorb that through the 2022 budget. And I was asked about, well, how about, would insurance cover it? And with all of the damages that were done, it still did not meet our deductible. So, so we have a pretty significant deductible in that facility. And then the next day, we had our SWAC meeting and there was a member of SWAC had some, several questions about the process that we took in hiring our new solid waste director. And we had some pretty significant discussion about that. The other thing that was important, we, we spent an awful lot of time talking about grass seed at the new facility. And there was a request to, by the city of Moorehead, to change some of the seed from its original grass to a, what they call, was it, am I correct? No, Commissioner Mojo, a bee, a bee grass seed, which is
Bee lawn.
Bee lawn.
Bee lawn, yeah. It's a, it's a combination of fescue and clover. And it apparently can grow up to 18 inches or something like that or Well, that was, that was what we reported. It was that it could grow up to, wasn't it, Commissioner Mojo, wasn't it? It could grow up?
Reported.
Hmm?
That's what was reported.
Yeah. And, you know, that, so it requires less mowing and, and so what we did do, and, and we had some concerns about, you know, because of that location and we're very close to, still close to tillable land that's there, that we, we wanted to stick with the original seed on the outside border that was close to where they, where we currently have ag production going on so that we don't want to potentially contaminate that with some sort of seed that they don't want in their fields. So we've kind of come to an agreement there and, and in, there's an internal area, if you're So, we've kind of come to an agreement there, and there's an internal area, if you, I don't know if you recall, but there was like a one-acre piece that we're going to actually, what was that one called?
Soil and water is actually doing the pollinator.
Yeah, that's a pollinator, one-acre pollinator area there that's, and then there's some more internal areas that we've, you know, and again, this is something that, because it goes outside of what the original contract was, we wanted to bring it up here and to make sure the Board was okay with moving forward with that bee seed. And it's just, it's some internal areas that are away from the production, and the city, and any extra cost associated with that over and above the per-acre price, for lack of better, that we're, the city is going to pay that additional cost to have that done. And I don't know if I can maybe just ask Steve, is that something, is that something more informational? We don't really need to act as a Board on that, do we, or?
No, we wouldn't need to act in the Board, because there's no additional cost to the county on that.
Okay, all right. So, anyway, so that was, that, and we did learn that due to the availability issues regarding concrete, that's delayed other components of the project, and now the date that they're suggesting that it could be ready to turn over to the county would be December 28th is the new date. And then, we had a little bit of discussion about how long after it's turned over to us that we need to work with Cory and everybody to make sure that we have a plan as when it's available for the public to use. And so, I'm assuming we're probably, if the December 28th date ends up reality, we would probably be looking at mid-January to the 1st of February before we would see this being able to be open for the public to actually start using. There's a lot of things that still would need to be tested and worked out before we would bring it into full operation. I think that's all on that one. Friday, some of us were able to take the tour of TerraCon out in Holly, and what an amazing operation that is. Wow, it was, Steve, thank you for, you said we would be impressed when we went out there, and I certainly was impressed. The vision that they had there to do all of that stuff, and for those that don't know about TerraCon, they basically are prefab makers of concrete walls and things like that for buildings, whether it's decorative and all sorts of sizes and shapes, and their business is going so great, everything has to be pre-ordered, and they have two years' worth of work already lined up. That's just how impressive they are. I was talking a little bit with them, and they're, right now, they're limiting their market to an 800-mile radius, because that's all they, that's all their facility can handle. And when you get beyond that, there becomes some more shipping issues, but certainly there's going to be discussion coming forward about them expanding, and it's going to be a good topic for us to all hear about. And the number of employees, I think, another question I asked is they're bringing in, I think he said over 100 non-colony employees in that facility, and that's just amazing. And they're skilled positions, probably making good money, so. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Campbell. Commissioner Ebinger?
Thank you. I had no meetings last week.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Gross?
After, we had a meeting last Wednesday on the detox center, they went over the B3 regulations that they have to now comply with, and they're doing current drillings right now to check for geothermal, I don't know which system we're going to go with. They're doing some boring snow to find out the soil will take the geothermal requirements. Also doing, working with a furniture vendor, see what type of furniture, the cost of furniture, and how much that will be. Then we went over the whole building, room by room, to see what's needed in each one, what type of tables are needed, cabinets and what have you. So, it was a nice, long meeting on going through room by room, and I'm sure they're going to need some more information, but it's a good meeting on furniture and stuff. And I also went through the hotterites with TerraCon, and it's just amazing when I look, when I first found out about the hotterites there, you know, they were a milk and industry and a meat industry or whatever, all the meat, and now you go out there, and they've got buildings out there that, it's just tough to imagine what they've done out there, and it's just a great addition to Clay County. Thank them for being there. That was my meeting.
Thank you. Commissioner Gross and Campbell, I know part of serving on the Planning Commission, when those applications for TerraCon come up, a major component of discussion is that road. And as you drove to the facility, clearly, that is a gravel road, and dust has been an issue that some landowners have brought up. The colony has been very responsive in terms of making sure their drivers are slowing down, which I think you also observed, but that road, in order to sustain the development that's going on, needs to get updated or paved and whatever. And obviously, that comes with substantial costs, but that is something that Cornelius has always said he wants to be part of that discussion and part of mitigating that problem. And since both of you serve on the Highway Planning Committee, I'd like to see that be an issue. And I get, we have five-year plans to deal with and dollars to deal with, but we've brought in, or they've brought in, our state representatives and state senator to that conversation as well. They are currently employing 400 employees. I mean, they are one of Clay County's biggest employers, and so, if we can address the road component, that would be helpful.
If I can, Madam Chair, I appreciate that, and certainly, our Highway Tracking Committee should look at that. It was obviously clear, you know, we're going there, and I think maybe one of the areas to start is ownership of that road. I believe that road that we traveled on is actually a township road. You know, maybe there needs to be some discussions there, because when you get into altering and start changing something from a gravel to asphalt, obviously, the original investment is significant.
Right.
However, if it can be part of a state aid system, you have access to some of those state aid highway dollars, and I think we need to have that conversation, and we maybe need to start talking with the township about it, and the potential, and for, you know, do we have room, for example, could that be added to our state aid highway system? Or do we have an area that maybe we had future plans as a state aid highway that maybe aren't, didn't pan out? We've done that before, too, where we've been able to switch a state aid highway from one area to another area that has more significant travel. I think those are excellent points that we need to discuss, and we're having a Highway Tracking meeting today, we'll bring it up.
Perfect. Commissioner Kaylee?
On that point, too, sometimes it's good to have all of the data going into those discussions. Has MetroCog done a traffic count on that road before? And if not, is that something that we could request, just to get a real picture of what's happening currently?
I don't believe they have done a traffic count on that. I think that goes to the township ownership component, that they, you know, we just have, Holly's an associate member on that Board, but certainly, I think we can bring up that ask to the township to see if they can request that.
And I think that might fall outside of MetroCog's area, I don't know, but...
Yeah, it's borderline, but we can see.
Traffic counts are important.
Commissioner Gross, did you have any other reports? All right, thank you, Commissioner Gross. Commissioner Kaylee?
Thank you. I had a number of meetings last week following Board. I met with some of the leadership from the mosque and the Afro-American Development Organization, and Karen Pfeifer, who's doing contract work for public health and social services for Clay County, to have some discussions about different needs in that community, and conversations centered around childcare development and some public health outreach pieces, mental health pieces. So, that was a great conversation. I look forward to further developing that relationship with those folks. Then on Friday, I had a conversation with some of our AMC staff from Health and Human Services that I'm on the committee for, as well as Rhonda Porter and Brenda Mahoney from Maxa, the Cass Clay Land Trust, and some other nonprofit partners, to talk about the potential for a family resource center in Clay County, but specifically, probably in Morehead. This is something that we talked about quite a bit at our AMC Policy Conference, and is part of the Health and Human Services platform that will be going forward next year. And so, just looking to see what that could look like for Clay County to get in on some of that work. This would be a public-private nonprofit partnership, very community-led, to meet some of the needs in our low-income subsidized housing-type areas. So, we'll see where that goes. I also went on that TerraCon tour. I did want to mention, too, with that, some of the conversations I had with leadership there was about the different ways that they take care of their employees, because being out in the country, it's sometimes hard to get there, it's sometimes hard to find childcare for your families, so they're looking at the potential of having a childcare center down the road. So, we'll get involved in those conversations with Karen Pfeifer, who's doing that contract work with the county. I'll connect them. And I also wanted to note that they are shuttling people in from Purim right now to work out there, so.
Pelican.
Oh, they said Purim, but could be. At any rate, they're looking for creative solutions to take some of the burden off of employees to get them to work out there, and I appreciated that. Yesterday, the Clay County Law Library Board met. We've been going through a process with all of our subscriptions for print material and those contracts to identify what exactly we are being charged for, is it being used, and then eliminating some things that are not as useful. And the idea there is to shift our expenditures towards more self-help materials, less digests and statute books, and keeping our collection more in line with user-friendly materials and collection development, which is responsive to the needs of the community that's coming in to use that library. Certainly, we still have access to all of those other things through the databases, so it's not a major loss to not have it as print material on the shelf. We still have that access. The terminal contract is going to expire at the end of the year, so we're looking at different pricing options going forward with that as well. I did also want to note that two weeks ago, the texters at the jail stopped working with the legal resources due to a Westlaw update, but kudos to Carrie at the jail and our IT staff, who quickly worked to solve that problem and restore that access to those folks. That's one of the biggest users of our legal resources. We also will no longer have a Board member from MSUM's library as a mandatory position on that law library Board, since they don't have a law program at MSUM anymore. It didn't seem to be a good fit to require a librarian from there to participate when they don't have a program anymore. So, instead, we're proposing adding a representative from the Clay County Correctional Facility to be appointed by the jail administrator. And again, since the folks residing there are some of our heaviest users of those resources, I think that makes a lot of sense. So, we'll be voting on new representatives to that Board in the next couple of weeks, and we'll continue the review of our financials. I wanted to also note a change to the hours of the law library. It will be, for the librarian to be there, is going to be Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday from 8:30 to 12:00. And the legal self-help clinic is still Thursdays from 10:00 to noon. We are considering adding a few more hours due to increased traffic and needs of that service, which folks find really helpful and vital. And then, last night, I had the Morehead City Planning Commission. We had five public hearings, request of a vacation of an easement, there was a rezone from transitional to community commercial, and a request of a vacation of First Avenue South right-of-way. That one was just kind of cleaning up a piece of the underpass project. So, First Avenue is closed currently, and it will remain closed. That small piece of property is going to the railroad in exchange for some land that we got as a part of that project. And then, there was a request from the City of Morehead and Morehead Public Service for the vacation of Fourth Avenue North right-of-way within the Hills addition. There was no public comment on any of those pieces, and all were approved.
Commissioner Kaylee, I have a question. You had commented on the vacation of land that we got, are you...
I meant the City of Morehead.
Okay.
Not the Clay County, yep. The piece that did have lots of discussion, though, was a request of the City of Morehead for text amendments to the Morehead City Code for use regulations as it relates to the sale and manufacturing of cannabinoids. So, we were not looking at anything other than what zones those products can be sold and manufactured in, so just that use table for the different zoning. But there were a few folks that came that had questions about what the use and sale and manufacture is going to look like of cannabinoids in Morehead, and we were forwarding those comments on to the appropriate folks to get them the right answers, because that wasn't really the point of that meeting. What we did say, though, is we wanted to have no sale or production in residences, no matter what the zoning is, and that any distillate of cannabinoid products could only be created in community commercial, regional commercial, or industrial zones. And then, they added mixed-use one as a potential space for cannabinoid production. And what they're talking about there would be like baking cookies, making gummies, so something that's happening already, but just including a THC product in those products. And that concludes my reports. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kaylee. Yes, Commissioner Ebinger?
Oh, yeah.
You're screwing me up.
Sorry.
I was like, wait, what?
That's right.
That's all right. All right, so, last week, I also attended the PIC Committee meeting that followed this Board meeting. I think we've addressed those concerns with the Board action from the sheriff, and also attended the Auditor's Exit Meeting, just continuation of gratitude from employees. The State Auditor's Office... continuation of gratitude from employees, I, um, the State Auditor's Office really did, um, congratulate Clay County for always being so good to work with and responsive to the questions, and, um, it's always great to receive a, an opinion, as we have. I believe that report is coming to the board in upcoming weeks. That afternoon, I left, I, uh, traveled to Duluth. I was, uh, present, uh, presenting at, um, on behalf of Lakes and Prairies at the Minnesota Community Action, uh, conference that was happening there, a conversation about, um, government and how we, um, how we do a good job of outreach to all members of our, our community, but particularly those members who are in poverty and, um, in communities of, um, of color. Certainly, those are always challenging conversations to, um, figure out how we best serve all of our residents, and I really do appreciate the input from the folks that were presenting there. It's, um, definitely a thoughtful conversation. And then, Thursday, I attended the SWAC committee meeting that Commissioner Campbell discussed. There was concern from that advisory committee about how, uh, the county goes about hiring. Um, certainly, hiring times are challenging, and we are excited about the individual that we hired, and feel like it is a great step forward for that department, and we did have a long conversation about, um, turf, grass mixes. Uh, I think yesterday, during our transfer station meeting, we did, we did come to a, a pretty good consensus about what, what it will look like going out, um, going in the ground. Um, I did not attend the pre-cast facility meeting. I was out there and was able to observe, um, all of the great things that are happening. I do have a meeting this coming Friday to meet with Cornelius. Uh, and then yesterday, as noted, I did attend the transfer station meeting. Um, several, um, wrap-up items that are, are happening as we move forward with completion for that facility, and, uh, coordination, uh, we did talk a little bit about once we're, um, moving inside, uh, security for inside the facility, those, those employees. I think we were able to kind of address those concerns on that. And then also, um, came to me afterwards, I, at some point, we have to think a little bit about what our public message is in terms of transferring, let's see what I, pun there, transferring of operations to the transfer station, and how we coordinate and get the message out to the public about what, what goes where, and hours of, of all of the household has, everything. So I'd like us to start thinking a little bit internally about what that, that message will be. And then, uh, I do know that for whatever reason, um, we didn't get it on the agenda, the jail ministry is having their, um, their, um, presentation this evening, wanting to make sure that we didn't have a violation of a quorum, um, because it wasn't advertised. Not sure if anyone else was attending. I, I am planning on going, but...
I didn't know about it.
Okay. Okay. Uh, and then, wanting to make sure that we get on the agenda November 9th from one, not agenda, but calendar, November 9th from 1:00 to 3:30, is that senior official's training that, um, Gabe, Gabe has scheduled, so we'll just get that on. And I believe that concludes my reports. Steve?
Uh, thank you, ma'am chair. Participated in the PIC meeting that's, uh, been addressed, and also the State Auditor's Exit Interview Meeting. Uh, as been mentioned, uh, we will be scheduling something in the upcoming weeks for the, the full board to, to hear the presentation. I did pass that information on once it was, uh, certified, uh, at the end of last week to each commissioner. Uh, county management, it was on the 28th, we talked about, uh, the preliminary budget being set, uh, Strive updates, um, Technology Services provided an update to October's security awareness a month. We also talked about insurance updates, uh, including open enrollment, which starts October 19th through November 4th. Again, this year will be a, a, a change. All of our staff have received the first email, uh, this week of what that process will look like. We're gonna be going completely online for our staff, so there won't be any more handout packets, uh, and so that will be something, uh, to, to be looking for. Uh, participated in the substance use crisis, uh, design meeting number five, Commissioner Gross, uh, spoke about, uh, we talked about, also talked about some timelines. Uh, we are looking to, uh, to have an updated, uh, updated estimate on the facility here within the next month, uh, based on bringing on, uh, Gertz Construction. Uh, and, uh, so, we're hoping to, hoping to, uh, have, working through this process, so by the beginning of March, we'll be having all of our bid documents, uh, ready to, ready to go. Um, I participated in the SWAC, uh, SWAC meeting that's been addressed. Also that morning, I did meet with Steve Gertz, uh, Joe Olson in regards to, uh, regards to the contract, uh, that this board approved, uh, to, uh, bring forward. I don't know that I'll have it by next week, um, but hope to have it from Gertz Construction by this week, so we'll have it, opportunity to have it reviewed prior to bringing it to board. Um, we did, uh, put, uh, Mr. Gertz in, in connection with Scott Fettick and his staff. Uh, they've already begin, uh, they kind of hit the road running, or hit the ground running, uh, and so they understand that any work they're doing, uh, is, uh, would be subject to the approval, uh, of that contract. Um, 29th, participated with the union, or, uh, updates on union negotiations with Darren. On the 3rd, uh, yesterday, uh, for our, for our community, the DMV, uh, is one of two counties that has a pilot project, uh, through the state of Minnesota, from yesterday through June of, uh, through June of 2023. For those looking to get their IDs, uh, and their driver's license, uh, those who go to the DMV will now, uh, be eligible to receive their, that ID or, or driver's license that day. Uh, and so, we've added another camera, we've added another 14th window out there, uh, and so I think that'll be a, a great service, uh, with, no longer have to, have to wait. Again, the state of Minnesota will have to determine based on, uh, based on these two pilot projects, that it's something that they want to continue after, after June, or add, uh, through, to, uh, different locations in the state. Uh, but it was out, uh, out there yesterday, and want to thank Chelsea Sylvester, uh, her staff, and also Lori Johnson for the work that they did, uh, to, uh, I guess, make the changes out there, uh, so we can provide that service. Uh, and just to note, it does not, it does not, you, if you're there for a real ID, uh, you will still need to continue to, to go through the state on that, or, or enhanced. So, uh, Resource Recovery Meeting, I participated, we've, uh, covered, you know, it was covered, and also had some union negotiation, again, discussions yesterday. Um, just a few things of note, vaccine clinics are continuing to be held for, for primary series or boosters, October 5th, 12th, 19th, and 26th. Again, you can go online to, to register for that. Um, payments for frontline workers are eligible to be processed starting, or they'll start receiving their pro, payments on October 5th. Uh, 1,025,655 Minnesota workers qualified, uh, for an average payment of $487.45. Um, Sheriff mentioned the SOC drive. Uh, again, uh, this week, uh, at the Yemcom Center on the 7th, they'll be having a, having a community listening session for the 7th District Judicial, uh, the judges will be there to ask questions, uh, take on feedback about the judicial system. Uh, and, let's see, uh, during this board meeting, we also got a drug court graduation tomorrow, uh, the 5th, uh, 1:00 PM, courtroom number four. And lastly, Darren and I are planning to be at our annual association meetings from Wednesday noon through Friday. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Steve, uh, do you have anything, Mike?
Nothing from the county attorney's office.
Okay, thank you. Colleen, do you have anything? If not, anything else, we are adjourned.